Dickinson City Commission of Tuesday, February 16th. The record should show that all five commissioners are present. Our first item of business will be to look at the order of business. I understand, Ms. Goss, that we do have one change to the agenda?
That's correct. Item, well, under the non timetable agenda, item C, under administration, the second report, the museum coordinator introduction, we're going to move that, remove that tonight, have that at a later date.
Anybody else have any changes to the agenda? If not, we'll look for a motion.
Make the motion, proof.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll look at the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like to discuss?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. With that, we will move to the regular agenda. Ms. Goss, you have a resolution concerning the signing of checks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is Resolution 2-2016. It is simply to add President Jackson as an authorized signer for both American Bank and Wells Fargo. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. If you guys trust me, we need a motion.
Who to approve this, President?
In a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Resolution 2-2016? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Go ahead, Ms. Goss.
Next, we have the Southheart wastewater agreement. We spoke about this last time or the time before. This is making some changes to the wastewater treatment contract with Southheart. Those changes include that Southheart agrees to assist the city of Dickinson in obtaining a grant to cover its portion of Dickinson's debt service. It also provides that they will provide the city with monthly accounts of units which will be used to determine the base fee. And their charges will be the base fee, the uses, as well as sewer access charges for any new accounts that hook into the system. And the other change is just specifications for collection of samples. This has been sent over to Southheart for approval. We have not heard back from them, so I would just ask for approval of the agreement conditioned on Southheart's approval as written.
Okay, and I think, Ms. Goss, is it a fair summary to say that the original agreement was based on an assumption of a certain population, a certain number of bookups?
That's correct. When this was originally done, it was based on an overestimation of the amount of usage of the system. And they also asked for a guarantee up to that usage. So this takes away the guarantee and only has them paying for the actual usage.
Which is a more reasonable basis for the agreement?
Correct.
Really, for both parties. Any other questions for Ms. Goss on this item? Okay, if not, we need a motion to approve this agreement.
We'll make a motion to approve the Southheart wastewater agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the agreement? Okay, if not, we'll vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. With that, we will move into reports. Ms. Goss?
We received from Southwest Water Authority, the rate increases. They are exactly what we were expecting. Water rates increased by 21 cents, which we already took into effect when we did the last rate increase in October. And then there was no increase to the industrial charges. So there's nothing else to do at this time, just wanted to report on that.
Okay, so no action needed, we're simply confirming what we've already done?
That's correct.
Okay. And Monthly Hiring Journal, we're looking for Ms. Nomenick. Or is Mr. Kubis going to do it? Or is Mrs. Binstock going to do it?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. It's been a little while since I've done the hiring journal. I don't have, well, I do have some good things to offer, I guess. We'll start off with police officer. We've had a couple rounds of interviews. We're at the background phase right now for one applicant, so we still have one opening, provided the other one goes through. Firefighters, we hired two firefighters this year, and they are on board already. We had some internal promotions within the fire department. We had a senior firefighter position promotion that we just recently went through, did the interview process, and that position has been filled. We had an assistant fire chief position for 2016. That was an internal hire, and that's been completed. And that left a fire marshal position open. That was an internal hire as well, and that's been completed. So I think we're pretty good so far for fire department for this year. Street maintenance operator, we've had several positions open, one for 2015 still that's open, and then we were given two positions for 2016. The position just closed on Friday, so we will begin interviews in about a week or so for the street maintenance operator positions. Street and fleet operations manager, we did just recently complete a round of interviews for that, and we have made an offer, and we are in the background phase right now with that applicant. So hopefully, things will go well, and that person will help us with our operator interviews. Museum coordinator, we did make an offer, and that person has started last week with us, so we have the museum coordinator. Now we're working on the curator, which is a new position for the takeover of the new museum. So we did the first round of interviews, and we'll be bringing some candidates in, three candidates for second interviews for the curator. We had some changes in our accounting department. One of our longtime employees retired, so that left an accountant position open. We made a hire internally for that, which left her position open as an accounting tech, made another internal hiring for that position for the accounting tech. So those positions are still, are filled. We still have the deputy city administrator position that we are reviewing right now. Wastewater treatment plant operator, I believe you already met our new candidate for that. That position has been filled. Sanitation landfill operator, that's one position we have open, and a facility operator. We had one open position for 2016 with the new public safety center coming on board, so that was open today. And we also had a computer technician opening for 2016, and that was recently filled.
Ms. Nomenick, it looks like the list is shorter, and probably going to get a little shorter yet.
Yes, we have one position posted right now, so not a lot of openings right now at the city.
With the deputy city administrator, have we actually turned an agency loose yet?
I don't believe so.
So it's not actively?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Nomenick on her report? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We will move to engineering. And Mr. Kubis, you have a couple of items.
I do, thank you, President Jackson. Two reports, and one will roll right into the other. One was on an oil impact CIP reforecasting update. Of course, we've been going through, and Mr. Kessel's been updating you, reforecasting on some of those revenue streams. A big one that we receive at the city is the oil impact, and as a lot of that oil impact dollars goes to our CIP program. Been digging into those numbers to see exactly where we're at, and how it will fit into our, or how our 2016 CIP budget will fit into the remaining funds. Just so you're aware, it was a difficult challenge, because, as you know, we're not sitting on the same fiscal calendar as the state is, so when they give us dollars in 2015, half of that comes in '14, and the other half comes in our fiscal, first half of our fiscal '15 year. So what we did, we went back, really, to the beginning of our CIP program as we know it, when we started receiving oil impact dollars. Of course, the big chunk of those dollars came last year in the $44 million of surge funding, and then what we called oil impacts and gross production tax, which came in various grants and through legislation. Long story short, though, of the projects that we've built, really starting with the water reclamation facility and the Public Works building, through projects that are projected to be constructed in 2016, which I'll go over in a minute here. Right now, we believe that there's a remaining balance of about $8 million. So we're still double checking those numbers, and of course, these dollars change monthly as we make payments and as estimates on upcoming projects are tweaked. But we are comfortable that we have the funds to move forward with our 2016 CIP program in full. And with that, I can roll into the overhead. I'll try and do it, maybe on my side here, if I can use the pointer to go through a few projects, so. On our prioritization for 2016, we went through this many, many times over the years for the '14 and '15 program. We haven't done a detailed prioritization of '16. Right now, we wanted to make sure that the funds were there to complete the program as a whole. And so I'll break it down into really just two groups. And the first group being projects that are already bid, or had already even started construction in the last half of 2015. So maybe if we could dim the lights a little bit, we could see this better. But the first project that we'd have in 2016 is the Patterson Lake Crooked Crane Trail down by Patterson Lake. That project was bid last year and awarded. No substantial construction has started yet, but we anticipate that that project will be completed in '16. We have the Lift Station 5 upgrade project just south of the river. That project is under construction already. The Lift Station 14 project, and there's some forcepoint, this is 10th Avenue East, that project is bid, but hasn't started construction yet. The truck bypass route, again, that's on our CIP list. We don't have any city dollars in that. That project isn't shown on here, it kind of goes off the map, but going north from Exit 56, it's bid already through the DOT, anticipated completion this year. The east side half million gallon storage tank is right there by the Public Works building. That project has begun construction on the tank. And then the State Avenue Railroad Bridge, everyone's been through that construction already. Again, that bridge, the bulk of that bridge work will be done in 2016, so that project is on our 2016 list. So those are the projects that are bid or underway already to be completed in '16. The remainder of the projects that we have for 2016 are the regional landfill, land acquisition down here. As that project has been ongoing for several years, looking at expansion options, and Public Works Director Zurov would be better to explain this, but we are moving forward with a project that is opening up another cell in the existing landfill. So there's two projects at the landfill, it's land acquisition and the cell development on Cell 3B4. The next project is West Gravity Phase 3. You see up here, that goes to the new school. There's been a little bit of reconfiguring how we're approaching that project right now. We initially started off as a West Gravity Phase 2, just to get sewer up to the school. We've added a water main to that, too, to really loop our two big mains, one that comes up, the interim bypass, and one that goes on 21st Street. So there'll be a water main looping those two together. That project is anticipated to be bid here this spring. And then the next project we'd have would be a street project that would follow that same general alignment, but it would be just on the west side of the school, and then would connect out to 30th Avenue or the interim bypass. The next project is the reuse fill station. Again, this was a project, we've looked at several different sites. We're showing it right now out at 116th and Highway 10. That's really just a placeholder on the map, but somewhere in that vicinity, the city would install a fill station to use the reused water. Some of that reused water, we've sold here recently in the last four to six weeks, but just with a temporary fill station. The city doesn't have a permanent filling station that anyone could go to right now. Then we have some water projects, and a lot of these water projects, I think all of these water projects have some level of State Water Commission funding in them. Going through those quickly, it's the east side tank water main. So the water tank is under construction right there, and this line would tie that existing tank. There's water to the Public Works building, this would be a 12-inch main coming out from close to 10th Avenue East, tying into that tank. Then we have the River Drive Booster Station. This line is the main that will connect that booster station to the KLD subdivision. So the main was installed last year, the booster station would be installed this year. And then our plan is to bid that with a State Avenue Booster Station. Again, the water main is already in State Avenue, but the booster station would push higher pressures up to the next project, which is the 40th Street Water Main project. And that project would then tie in the system we have in the Cook subdivision. All these streets right now have a water main that dead ends, it would tie in all those dead end water mains, and connect over to the 40th Street East project that we did last year. The next project is Museum Drive, and that would be from Highway 22 to Sims. Be a very similar project to what we did on the west side of Highway 22 back in '13. So it's going to be concrete pavement, a rather short project, but of course, there'll be some inconveniences to businesses with that project. That is a DOT urban roads project for 2016, so there'll be DOT funds involved in that. A project that we have on the agenda tonight is the Cook Meadow Hills Country Oaks Estate Lighting District. So there's that project. The next one is the Lamont Stormwater Project. And that would involve installing a pond in an existing city park and recs, park, the all seasons park there, and then some storm sewer to tie into that pond. We have a couple intersection improvements that are planned right now for 2016. Be two signalizations, the first being Highway 22 and 21st Street. Of course, there's signals there right now, the one has been damaged for a couple years now, is in a temporary state, but it would add left turn phasing, so you'd get that dedicated left arrow for east and westbound traffic, as well as southbound traffic. And then also a signal at State Avenue and 21st Street. The next project would be a developer-led project. You can kind of see right there, it'd be an extension of 15th Street. 15th Street was constructed and, or finished last year. This would be a short extension to that to provide another second access point. There's some homes going in there right now, and this would extend 15th to tie into that first street, providing everyone two points of access in that next phase of the Westridge Couple other projects, again, would be developer-led projects, would be a water supply system out to the Exit 56 development, and a sewer line from that Exit 56 development with that would tie into our existing sewer main on Highway 10. Then the last project on the list is Ninth Street East Reconstruction, right there. That was going to be a part of last year's mill and overlay project, and as we investigated it, the conditions were such that it really was beyond a mill and overlay for a repair option. So it would really be a reconstruction of Ninth Street from 10th Avenue East to about 16th Avenue East. The remaining project that isn't on the map right now, oh, and I'm sorry, I think I jumped over a couple special improvement projects. We've went through these projects last year, a small project by Dickinson Ready Mix on Westgate Avenue to pave that, and then off the east business loop, paving 15th and 16th Avenue East. Those two are planned as special improvement district projects. And there's the potential to do a small mill and overlay project. As we're reforecasting our, 50% of our 1% sales tax, though, those dollars might not be sufficient to do a mill and overlay project this year. We'd anticipate that the Ninth Street East Reconstruction project would come out of those same funds, and it's a pretty large project right now, we're budgeting it at $1.8 million. So the mill and overlay is not shown, we don't have an area identified for that project, but if funds are available, it's something we could put together for a 2016 project. So with that, that's kind of a quick summary of our 2016 CIP program for the city. Again, we went through our funding numbers, through some of the reforecasting of revenues that Mr. Kessel's done, and we're comfortable, this is an achievable and a manageable program for 2016. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Questions for Mr. Kubis?
I have one question. On Eighth Street South and 22, by loaf and jug there?
Yep.
The light project there, is that not going to happen?
It's not on the 2016 list right now. We've been working with the DOT on that. They've asked us to look at a roundabout, which we've done. We have a consultant on board for that project. Their, I guess their investigation into a roundabout was that it wouldn't be a very good, a very good location for a roundabout, because we have different, the main reason being, you know, there's some access issues with the frontage roads, but that you have a five lane coming in from the north, and then it necks down to a two lane to the south, and then two two-lane streets coming in, so you'd almost need a two-lane roundabout there, and I don't know if we're quite ready for that one in Dickinson.
I don't think that would make sense.
But it still is on the list right now, not in 16, though.
Okay.
Did we do a warrant study on that intersection?
We did, Commissioner.
And even with the increased traffic at that time, it didn't really warrant it?
No, it did warrant, but just barely. There's seven warrants for installing a signal. I believe it met one of those warrants. So it did meet it, but I think the DOT, since it's on their system, is being maybe a higher level of scrutiny on it, because it was just on the threshold of meeting that warrant.
I have only one. Mr. Kubis, are you getting any indications as to what we're going to see for construction prices this year?
Well, you know, we haven't bid anything yet as a city, but in talking to some consultants and to the DOT, who have bid some projects, I think asphalt, as it should, has come down. Last year, we were paying about $550 a ton for the asphalt that goes into the hot mix, the oil. We're hearing that that's going to be in that $450 range now, so a pretty significant drop in oil prices. And then just the competitiveness of the bidding, we're, again, hearing and seeing that all across the board, all that, all different facets of construction are pretty highly competitive right now. So I hope our prices come down quite a bit.
That's likely to be across the board with paving, underground, streetlights, whatever it may be?
Well, I hope so. Paving is always, you're a little bit, especially these paving projects that we have in town right now, about half concrete and half asphalt, they're smaller jobs, though, so you're still at the mercy of a company bringing a plant in for a bigger project, especially on the asphalt, to get more competitive bids there. But we, I anticipate that the prices will be competitive in all aspects.
Anything else? Good presentation, thank you. With that, we will move down to building code enforcement, and it looks like, looks like Mr. Zurov has lost his job. We've got a substitute tonight, go ahead.
Building Department, 2015 report.
Thank you.
First time. Commercial structures were down 35% in 14, they were at 31. 15, they were at 20. Public structures, like Public Works and stuff like that, they were down 60% from 5 to 2, from 14 to 15. Single-family structures, down 66.8% from 268, in 14 to 89, in 15. Multifamily, enroled housing, townhouses, stuff like that, down 80% from 10 in 14 to 2 in 15. Total permits issued, 64% down from 314 in 14 to 113 in 15. Total multifamily housing units, down 85.4% from 288 in 14 to 42 in 15. New building permit values, down 49.7% in 14, from 214 million, I'll just round it out, to 107 million in 15. Miscellaneous permits, plumbing, mechanicals, stuff like that, down 54.1% from 2, 2,362 in 14 to 1,083 in 15. Fees remitted to the city, down 22.4% from 1.5 million to 1.2 million, from 14 to 15. And it looks like that's it. And then, to date, well, are there any questions?
Yeah, any questions on any of these figures from the Building Department, Inspection Department? I don't think any of it's any surprise, I think we knew those numbers were coming. We got to the last half of the year. Interesting to see the final tally.
There's a lot of, too, you know, I mean, they used to build through winter, and they don't do that anymore. They found out heating the ground is pretty spending, not that that's why it's coming down, but that started coming down right away. After the first year that they decided they were going to do that, the cost of it was like, I don't know, $10,000 to house, and they decided that's over. That then, that's not why it was planned.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, with that, we will move to the timetable agenda. We have a 5 o'clock agenda item with the Patterson Lake development, and Mr. Alan Fair is going to start that presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. President Jackson, members of the commission, thank you for allowing us time on your time. President Jackson, members of the Commission, thank you for allowing us time on your agenda to give you a brief on this project. I'm Ellen Fair. I'm here today representing the Patterson Lake Task Force and to update you on activities and the status of the Patterson Lake Project. As you know, Patterson Lake and the Recreation Area are federal land managed by Dickinson, About a year and a half ago, the Dickinson American Legion Post approached Parks and Rec about our vision for the Patterson Lake area. Last June, we held a meeting with stakeholders for the lake, and in October, we formed the Patterson Lake Task Force and have proceeded with monthly meetings since then. Before I go into the status of the task force, let me just talk briefly about American Legion and why we're interested in this, how this fits with our mission. American Legion is the nation's largest wartime veterans organization. It was chartered by Congress in 1919, right after World War I. It's a 501(c)(3), excuse me, 501(c)(19) nonprofit, and we have four principles, or sometimes referred to as pillars, and they are Americanism, children and youth, national security, Veterans Affairs and rehabilitation. This project fits into number two, children and youth, because this is a project that not only will benefit veterans and their families, but will veteran, will benefit the entire community. Our local post, the Matthew Brew Post, is named after a young man who was killed in World War I, Matthew Brew, a local, local man from Stark County. And just as a comment, our post is involved in many local projects. These are some of the main ones. We support Boy State, we support Legion Baseball, and Boy Scouts. We've developed a Veterans in Crisis Program to work with the Veteran County Service Officer to provide transportation funds for veterans mainly going to the VA Hospital in Fargo. We have an honor guard that does funeral honors. We have a color guard that marches and parades. We annually do flag retirement ceremonies to destroy, in a ceremony, flags, US flags that are tattered and worn. And last but not least is our Patterson Lake Project, which is our most ambitious project. I want to talk about this project in terms of three major components. First is a lakeside facility, referring to the building of a building alongside and on the shore of the lake. The second being enhancement of the lake, and the third being the outdoor activities and events that we want to enhance. And let me point out, first of all, that this is a vision. There's nothing in stone. This drawing is a concept. It is, what may end up built, being built, may not look like an A-frame, who knows? But the drawing here is to illustrate that it, we're looking at building a building on the shore of the lake to have patios and balconies and to be a welcoming building that is open to the public and will be a veteran-friendly facility. So some of the things we envision to be in the building, we anticipate that there would be a restaurant, a bar, meeting rooms, reception area, and of course, since we're looking to help the lake be more of a year-round facility, having indoor restrooms is very Also, right in front of this facility, that walkway is the crooked crane trail, so possibly some locker rooms for folks who are using crooked crane trails. We're also looking at having a gazebo or pavilion next to it. We're entertaining ideas if there's any kind of rentals, like small watercraft or bikes or things like that, that would be workable to have at this facility. So to give you an idea of where we're talking about, first of all, let me show you a Google view of the lake, and of course, up is north, to the right is the east end of the lake, where the dam is. To the left is the west end, where it's more shallow. And on the north side, where Lyons Park is, where that entrance is, that's the entrance we're talking about. There's a boat dock there, boat ramp there, and beach area, and that's the area we're referring to. And in this next schematic drawing, on the left side, let's see. On the left side is the entrance to Lyons Park. Lyons Park is, comes in, it would be off to the left of this drawing. The boat dock, or the boat ramp and the beach are number 10 and number 4 on this design. The building is at number 7, and you'll notice that we've also added in a few things. The crooked crane trail is on here, loops around it. There's a parking lot behind it, and at number 5, we've put in a gazebo, and number 8, if we have a bait shop or rentals, it would be perhaps in this area. And at number 9, there are perhaps some enhancement of more piers, boat docks, that kind of thing. So this is a concept and gives you an idea of where we're proposing this building to So that's the first part. The second part is the enhancement of the lake. Primarily, we're looking at improving water quality from the standpoint of not the fish, but in terms of swimmers. So for example, the beach area in the late summer gets rather green. There's a lot of green algae. Fortunately, it's not the blue-green algae that's dangerous. We're told by, that it's the green algae that gets kind of slimy, but is not a hazard to people. However, we're looking at different possibilities, if there's ways that we can especially clean up the beach area. Would like to expand the beach area. So some of the things we're looking at, this, in the pictures to show you, the dredging machine is kind of like a big snowblower. It takes a slurry of water and mud and sends it up into a settling pond that's on the hillside behind it. We're not looking at dredging the entire lake. That would be very costly, but there may be ways in which there are small areas of the lake, beach area, other places, that it may be cost-effective to dredge, depending on what the point is that we're trying to accomplish in terms of improving the lake or access to the lake. The other thing in the lower left, that's a picture of an aeration machine. We're looking into that as a possibility. We're not convinced it will necessarily improve the algae growth, but we're looking into that as a possibility. And then the third thing are the outdoor activities and events. So for example, we would like to see many more outdoor activities. We'd like to get people out of their homes, over to the lake. Many people in our community can't afford to go up to the big lake. We have this lake just right outside our city limits. If we can enhance it, have a building there so people can use it more year-round. The idea is, there are many things we could be doing more of, anything from fishing tournaments, boating races, sailing regattas, outdoor concerts, and so on and so forth. So we're looking at, if we had a building out there, it would be much easier for people to have access to the lake and make use of it. We're currently in our planning phase. There are entities like Brenner Foundation and Bush Foundation who have an interest in this. We have approached them, and Bush Foundation did give us a small amount of funds, but they're really interested in seeing what is this going to look like when we've completed the planning phase. The planning phase involves these six studies or activities. The site schematic design, that's the design that I showed you earlier, and you have a handout in front of you. So that's been done. Architects locally did it at no cost to us. The next thing that we are going to do is a feasibility study. We estimate the cost to be $12,000. Between the Bush Foundation grant and Parks and Rec, we believe we have the money to complete the feasibility study. Assuming that the feasibility study says that this is feasible, we'll then move on to our next studies. And you'll notice, besides the public input surveys, I mean, we need to get public input, what will people support out here? That's going to make a big difference in terms of what we decide to do and move forward to. Anything from the rentals to the size of the building for use of reception areas to whatever. It really depends on what are people going to support, so we're going to rely on the experts to give us that idea through the feasibility study and then through the public input surveys. We'll then do a business plan, and incidentally, you'll notice under the cultural archaeological survey, $0. Well, that's because the Bureau of Reclamation will do that survey. Basically, what they're, what they're saying is, before we till any, move any dirt, they've got to make sure there aren't artifacts there and so on. They will do that for us after we've finished the business plan. So there's a sequence of things that happen, have to happen, and of course, before we till, move any dirt, the soil testing will have to be completed. Our estimation for all of these is somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000. We have the initial $12,000 in hand. We think that in a, in a couple months, we'll have the, or maybe a month and a half, we'll have the feasibility study underway, and within a few months, we should have the feasibility study done. Hopefully, by sometime mid to late summer, we'll have that done and be ready to move forward. So at this point, just to be clear, we're not asking for city funding at this point, but we are going to be hopefully coming back after the feasibility study, looking for funding for the rest of our planning phase. And again, once we've completed the planning phase, there are other grant funds, outdoor heritage funds, other types of things, and of course, we will have to look at doing a capital campaign at this point. So at this point, we are looking at completing these six studies or events to complete our planning phase. And then the Patterson Lake Task Force. You recognize this picture, it was on the front page of the Dickinson Press about a week ago. What, it's a, they did a very nice story for us, a good-looking group we got here. Also, KQCD did a nice story for us last week also on the, on the task force in the Patterson Lake Project. Patterson Lake Task Force involves many stakeholders. We tried to involve as many as we could. This task force is open to the public, so if there's anybody either here or who watches this broadcast, anyone who is interested in being part of the task force is welcome to attend meetings and participate in that. We do have an executive committee, some of the usual suspects. I'm the chair of this. Galen Baker's our recorder. Scott Decker is the chair of the Lake Committee. Pamela Baumgartner is the chair of the Funding Committee, and Darrell Newbert is the chair of the Building Committee. Our fiscal agent, who is a 501(c)(3), is the Western Wellness Foundation that you're familiar with because they're, they're the parent organization of the Best Friends Mentoring On March 1st, I'll be giving this presentation to the Stark County Commission. On March 2nd is our next task force meeting at 5 o'clock at the West River Correction, uh, West River Community Center. Again, we meet monthly, so anybody who has an interest is welcome to attend. And if there are any interests, any questions, I would welcome any questions.
Dr. Fair, a couple of questions. Is your intention to have the Park District manage and staff at the facility?
Well, the short answer is no. In terms of the building, the Park District has told us that they don't have an interest in owning the building, managing the building, or staffing it in any way. So we will be looking at, and within our task force, we are starting to respond to some of those kind of, make some of those kind of decisions. We haven't made a decision in terms of who is the best entity to own it. Should it be an existing entity? Should we create a new nonprofit entity to own it? And has ownership management the same thing? Maybe, not necessarily. Right now, that's not an immediate issue because we do have a fiscal agent who will manage any funds. We do have the, the task force and an executive who will move forward in terms of researching things and making decisions, but at some point, we'll have to decide who owns it, who manages it.
Second, I know this isn't a true picture or whatever, is there plans for a wedding facility for, to hold weddings out there and dances? Is it going to be large enough for that?
Well, thank you for that question. The short answer is, depending on what the feasibility study tells us. Our anticipation is to have a reception area large enough to are doing that. Now, in terms of what size wedding or what, that's up to what the numbers tell us. At this point, it's part of the vision to do that, to have an area that could hold wedding receptions, but we'll see what the studies tell us.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Fair? Dr. Fair, maybe just, if you could repeat, first of all, if somebody else does want to get involved, should they be contacting you? You?
They certainly can, or they can just come to the, our next meeting if they would like.
And again, that next meeting is March 2nd?
Correct.
At the Community Center?
At the Community Center at 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock. Okay. Good. Anything else? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Interesting project. Okay, with that, we will move to our 5:15 timetable agenda item. Ms. Goss, you will lead us through that?
Yes, this is a street vacation for 29th Avenue East. It was originally platted with a skewed road alignment to I-94. The current street was realigned so that there's a perpendicular access. It has been replatted, but it cannot be recorded until this vacation is processed. So we recommend approval of this vacation, and it would be Resolution Number 3-2016.
I was a little confused when I went through this. Is it a street vacation or an easement?
My understanding, it's a street vacation, but there's also an MDU easement that goes along that, so I've been over this with the Stark County Recorder and confirmed that this is the required legal language to vacate that section.
Okay. Any questions from Commissioners, from Ms. Goss, first of all? And the resolution number is 3-2016?
That's correct.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will ask if there's anybody from the public who would like to address the Commission concerning this vacation. Anybody have any comments concerning the vacation? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing and look for action from the Commission.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you. Okay, we have motion and a second for Resolution 3-2016. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, so that motion carries. Okay, we'll move to our 5:20 timetable agenda item, which is an annual report from the Stark Development Corporation. Mr. Galen Baker is with us tonight. Welcome, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, President Jackson and members of the Commission. I do have a PowerPoint, but I brought printed copies for people who prefer their information that way.
Let me see if I can figure out how this works. I got it all but the, but the light part. Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the delay. Stark Development Corporation's been around for about 30 years now. I've been with them for 20. Our mission is to assess, assist Southwest North Dakota by facilitating, facilitating quality business opportunities and quality of place. We do that by trying to make the economy good here, and, and there are several ways we do that. Let's see if I can get to the next. Let's see if I can get to the next slide. Over the years, we've, the employment numbers very closely and Stark County's employment has been on a rise. That was about at ten thousand twenty years ago, as far as our workforce. These are job service figures. And you'll notice that December of fifteen, we're at about twenty-two thousand and up over December of last year. As you all know, there's empty apartments and empty motel rooms around town to some degree. And so, we know very well that some of the people that were here on a temporary basis were not counted. They were, they fell through the cracks somehow on that, on the workforce numbers. But we can be sure that the people that are counted now are at good employers here. They are registered here, they are accountable here. So, so these numbers are good, stable employees in Stark County for the most part. You know, we'll see some up and down there maybe, but it's been a good uphill climb. As the population of the city's grown, our workforce has certainly grown. We do compare ourselves to other, the top ten counties in North Dakota. There are, you know, you might be surprised to see that some of the communities that we used to think of the North Dakota Big Eleven communities are not even on the list of the top ten. And that's because they've been displaced by counties like McKenzie and Montreal that are, that have grown considerably in employment and are now within that top ten. And you can see the change in workforce from December thirteen through fourteen. Of course, we were, you know, we were pumping the oil pretty good then. And those western counties certainly, certainly showed the employment gains. A year later, from December of fourteen to December of fifteen, you can see that some of the counties that were enjoying great gains are not enjoying such great gains anymore. And in fact, across the state, employment growth was a little more meager. We are fortunate that in Stark County here, we have a lot of economic diversity. We have a lot of manufacturing jobs. We still have some value-added energy jobs, of course. We have, still have some energy production jobs. Those help us, but also, you know, our diversity as far as manufacturing and value-added services, I think, is what really keeps us up there. Short of only McKenzie County in employment percentage gain over the last year. These are the most recent numbers available to us. At Stark Development Corporation, we focus on primary sector, and that is the, the kind of businesses that bring new money to the area. We do that because once we get the money here, we can trade it with each other as much as we like, but you got to get it here. And, you know, our traditional new wealth generators were, of course, agriculture and energy. And those are big players. But we have other players that fortunately bring in a lot of money. You know, at Stark Development Corporation, we can't make a big difference in a, in an oil-related project. They are expensive. Over the twenty years I've been here, we had a goal when I got here of putting away a million dollars so that we could, you know, help out with a big development project. And after twenty years, we're at about two and a half million, two-point-six. And these days, that doesn't buy much, I'm sad to say. A million dollars back in twenty years ago, probably would translate into more than two and a, two-point-six these days. But certainly, the cost of things, you folks buy stuff all the time at the city, you know what things cost. But that money that, that we do bring in through manufacturing and other value-added and new wealth generating businesses, those do trickle down to all the other businesses. And whether it's healthcare, or it's restaurants, or it's retail, we take advantage of that. Some of the various things we've got going on now, you know, the, the development Highway Exit 56 that, that you spoke about a little bit ago, as well as the potential for a truck stop there. The, the role of that exit in helping the industrial sites to the west of Dickinson is huge for us. So, that's a great thing that, that's happening for us when we get that additional new bypass put in that will relieve some of the truck traffic in what has become retail and school-related areas. So, so that's good. We're seeing a lot of, you know, not much housing development going on as much anymore. You guys did a great job of reeling it in a little bit, pulling on the reins a little when, when a lot of developers wanted to keep building apartments, apartments, apartments. And, you know, some of them pushed hard and try, you know, and we did get a lot of apartments. Fortunately, I think you did the right thing by, by keeping a little bit of control of that. And, and our housing balance right now is, is probably got some empty apartments, yes, but we'll fill those back up over time. We're going to grow into every infrastructure investment, all the investments that have been made here. We do, we're very focused on transportation. The Theodore Roosevelt Expressway is a effort, an organization that is working to get Highway eighty-five four-laned. You know, the effort actually extends from Mexico to Canada. We realize not all of that will be four-laned, you know, in our time. But, but certainly, we're seeing great progress on the area from Bellfield to Watford City. The state is now doing the engineering and environmental on that section. That work will probably happen, I would guess, within the next few years. And that will be a great safety improvement. We've lost way too many lives out there. It's just too dangerous. It'll be great to have that four-lane for that section. And that will complete the two Circle Eight loops in North Dakota. As you, you know, we've, we always wanted, a lot of planners at the state level have always wanted a Circle Eight that, you know, is four-laned from Fargo to Grand Forks to Minot, down to Bismarck, back to Fargo, Bismarck to Minot, to Williston, to Dickinson, back to Bismarck. So, that we've got two loops in the state that ease the transportation burden for everybody, get people around. So, a lot happening, a lot of good things happening in Dickinson. Of course, we're still seeing some, a lot of pipeline work and that sort of thing. We will see those production jobs be sustained for quite a while as far as that kind of work. And of course, there, there's always something going on out there. A lot of work over rigs still working. That supports a lot of families. Education is very important to us. I can tell you right now that today at our Stark Development Board meeting, we granted fifty thousand dollars to Dickinson State University for new scholarships. And that is to support building that enrollment back up at Dickinson State University. I really think that there's a, a real bond between Dickinson State and the community that's, you know, sometimes when you have hard times, you lock arms a little better. And, and so, I really think that with the new president and the new people there at, at the university, that we're going to have a great partnership going forward. And of course, the work at the Catholic Schools Complex there and at the Dickinson Public Schools, that's all good. When I, I read a lot of stuff about the, you know, how companies select this, the towns that they're going to go to, the number one thing is workforce skills. And by adding to our workforce skills, having a great education system, that is great planning for Dickinson. And that is something that will really help us in the future. As you know, things have happened around here. No matter which way you go from town, I, we've had a lot of that oil field services and some manufacturing to the north, industrial services and manufacturing to the, to the east. Certainly, the value-added at the refinery and so forth to the, to the west. And certainly, there's, there's a transportation nexus out there to the west of Dickinson that brings together the interstate highway, the US highway, the Main Line Railroad, lots of big pipelines, and lots of heavy-duty electrical infrastructure. And all those things come together there, and that's why that's a, that's a great site. You know, my little pointer here for that. Over here, you, you see where Dakota Prairie Refinery is. And out here is where they want to build the new Meridian Refinery that's been talked about. If we can get that done, in between here is where we have great opportunity for industrial development in the petrochemical side and the, the value-added to energy products side. And we really, I think, ten years from now, we'll see a lot of that starting to fill in. And it's going to be very good for, for Dickinson and for Stark County and for the people who, who enjoy Dickinson. We've had a pretty good run, and so, I, I hope that we can continue that. We will be back in front of your commission in, in a month or two because our, our five-year contract for funding from the city commission is, is going to come up for renewal. And so, we need to renegotiate that and get that done. But I hope we've done what you wanted us to do. We've tried to make economic development something that gives people vision and hope for Dickinson and countywide and beyond, and I hope we've done that. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Galen, if you could recap just for the general public, what do you consider three important projects that you're working on right now?
Well, certainly, working with the petroleum industry to try to get the, that additional refinery out by Bellfield and get the, you know, and, and, you know, we've been spending considerable time even prior to that on some of the value-added products. So, we've been chasing the, the ethane production project. We're chasing some other projects that, that may be related to the plastics industry and the petrochemical industry. We are also involved in some, you know, we, we get requests for information from the state, and sometimes they don't tell us who the project is. So, we, so we're involved in one of those right now, you know, getting the information and so forth to them, and, and they won't tell us who the, who the employer is. But we chase after those. And certainly, one of, some of the big projects that we're going to see right here in town, Hildir Mountain Manufacturing is one that is planning an expansion. And they've said, I could talk about this. So, I, but they are, they are going to do a significant building expansion as well as employee expansion here in the next year or two. So, that's a big one for us. And then just today, actually, we approved a pace loan, our community participation in a, in a pace loan for Baker Boy, which is going to do an expansion of the automated equipment. And, you know, those are kind of expansions don't result in immediate jobs, but they certainly result in jobs down the road, and they result in higher pay and higher quality jobs for the people that are there.
Great.
Mr. Baker, I'm maybe going to catch you off-guard here, but I know you had your annual meeting today.
Yes.
Those watching on television tonight might be interested to know who the board members are.
Ah.
Are you able to do that?
I think I can do that. I don't have the list in front of me. TJ Haroff is the president. Ryan Jelik with Custom Data is the vice president. Ron Listel with the Jobs Development Authority is the secretary. Dan Kovash with Kovash and Dasevic is the treasurer. Mr. Steiner sits on the Development Commission Board, as does Mr. Frenzel. Mary Nordman sits on the, as our legal on the board. Let's see. I usually do this by geography. I just let my head wander around town. Floyd Hurt from Southard, Ambrose Hoff from Richardson.
Lisa Roors.
Lisa Roors represents the Chamber of Commerce.
Reed Raymond.
Reed Raymond represents the hospital. Pretty handy guy to have around, Carson, huh?
Okay, well.
Ken Zander from the county.
Didn't mean to catch you off-guard, but I thought it would be good for people to know who does sit on your board.
Bruce Dolzal from American Bank Center. It is a, we try to have somebody from a wide variety of business backgrounds. Really works for me because then I can call up somebody who's an expert at darn near anything and, and get good advice when we're trying to do a project. So, so it really works well for me. I hope it works well for everybody because you have somebody in play from various industries and so forth. So, Bruce Baer from Bellfield, see, they keep coming to mind.
Dr. Mittsle from the.
Yes, we just, we just added Dr. Tom Mittsle from Dixon State University, the president of the university, to our board.
Okay.
Well, I think it's important to note that while our economy was expanding, it would have been easy to take the foot off the gas and think that everything was going to keep going. And, and so, you probably don't get as much emphasis and respect as at that time as you do when we have a retraction and Dickinson's not hit as hard as other communities. Because the work that your organization has done to diversify our economy and maybe shield us from, from the brunt of the storm. And like you said, our community will continue to grow and thrive, and when oil comes back, that'll just be an added bonus for our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We are a very resilient and tenacious bunch, I think, out here in Dickinson and, and in Stark County. I think we'll be around to lick the next one.
Thanks very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move to our 5:35 timetable agenda item, which is a public hearing on the Cook Meadow Hills and Country Oaks Estates Lighting District. Ms. Goss, you're going to introduce that for us. I assume that you're going to walk through the process for us again?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So, the protest period for the Cook Meadow Hills Country Oak Estate Second Edition Lighting Improvement District ended on February 7th. In accordance with the state law, all property owners are given thirty days to file written protests with the city if they want their property to not be included within the district. If more than fifty percent of the owners, which is determined by area, protest the Improvement District, it would bar the Improvement District from moving forward. The entire district included two-hundred-and-seventy-one properties totaling just over six million square feet. We did receive protests which totaled four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand square feet that were timely, which is roughly seven-point-seven percent of the area. We did receive some late protests today. Even if those protests were included, it only raises it to seven-hundred-and-nineteen thousand square feet, which is just over eleven percent of the total, which means the protests were insufficient to bar the Special Improvement District from moving forward. At this point, the next step would be to have KLJ complete the construction documents, which would include the plans, specifications, and estimates, which would then come back to the commission for approval before the project could then be bid.
Okay. Now, our agenda says that this is a public hearing tonight.
That's correct.
You want to explain that? What, what are we hearing tonight?
Right now, we're just hearing the sufficiency of the protests. So, there's really, the determine, the protests have already been taken. So, they can comment on it, but at this point, it doesn't prevent the Improvement District from going forward.
Okay. All right. First, let me ask if there are commissioners with any questions, any clarifications needed? Anybody? Okay. With that, we will open public hearing. Anybody who wants to comment on what Ms. Goss has reported to us tonight? You can come to the podium, state your name, and ask questions or comments. Anybody who would like to comment? Any comments on the lighting district? Okay. If not, we will close the public hearing. We don't need any action then tonight, Ms. Goss. I assume that you will work with, that staff will work with the engineer to move the project forward.
Yes, that's correct. And then we'll bring it back to the commission in a resolution. If it's approved, it'll be done at that time.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I will ask if there are any commissioners that have anything that they want to bring to the meeting tonight. Hearing none, I'll ask if there's anybody from the public that has any issues they want to bring to the commission tonight. Anybody from the public? If not, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned.